Good evening, everyone, and I would like to welcome you here tonight and call to order the Monday, October 5th, 2020, Curlicet County Board of Commissioners meeting. And I would like to ask Commissioner Beaumont if he would lead us into vacation and pledge allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening, for this ability to gather, for this local government, and Father, to discuss the issues at hand. Father, for the opportunity for the community to come and voice their concerns as well. For the gratitude that you give to this Board of Commissioners' wisdom, as we discussed the issues before this evening. And, Father, I lift up our country's president, Lord, in his battle against the COVID virus. Father, we pray for a speedy recovery for he and his wife, Lord. And I lift up all elected officials on the federal, state, and local levels, Lord, that they too can speedily return to good health and go about the business of helping manage and govern the people that we've been entrusted to oversee and watch, Father. For I pray that you would bless this evening in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Beaumont. I do want to make one announcement that our chairman, Bob White, will not be here today. He's enjoying some family vacation, so I will be heading the meeting tonight. The next item is the approval of agenda. Do we have any updates or changes?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make an agenda amendment. I move to amend the agenda to, one, add an administrative report to take place prior to public comment and to remove the Parks and Recreation Surplus Resolution, item number three, from the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right, well, then, the next item is going to be for our administrative update, and I'll turn that over to our county manager, Ben Seckel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The administrative report tonight is going to be delivered by an employee from EnviroLink who is going to discuss the sewer issues that are being experienced currently in the Eagle Creek subdivision. As all of you are aware, there have been challenges with that private utility in the collection side, and the folks there have been struggling through that and trying to deal with it. So, we thought that, EnviroLink thought it'd be good to send a representative here tonight to discuss what's happened and where they're at, and hopefully a plan for the future. I do want to take a second just to make clear for everybody that the sewer system in the Eagle Creek subdivision is a private utility. It's owned by a private entity and is operated by a contract operator. It is in no way owned or operated by the county, and under the state of North Carolina rules, the county has no authority currently over that sewer plant. It falls under the jurisdiction of the Department of Environmental Quality. The Department of Environmental Quality is aware of what's going on. I talked to a gentleman in their office today that's over water quality, and they, under that, it falls wastewater. They're aware. I've had numerous phone calls with the president of the contract operator, trying to stay informed, and I've said this to certain folks. Obviously, as the situation comes under control, the county is more than willing to help sit down and talk it through with the owner of the system, the citizens there, the operator of the system. If we need to, we can bring some of our emergency management expertise. They are good at, you know, debriefing a situation and developing action plans, so that if these situations come up again, we can address them, or they can address them quickly and timely. So, with that, I'll turn it over to the representative from EnviroLink. Thank you.
Greetings. My name is Tracy Miller. My address is actually from Hornet County. I am the site coordinator and have been coordinating the efforts to get the Eagle Creek sewer system back up and running. Last Monday, both vacuum pumps in the main station failed interrupting sewer service to the complete community. The owners of the sewer system, Sandler Utilities, were contacted, and they approved hiring vacuum trucks to pump units called pots or pits, depending on whichever way the customer would like it. These are located in the front yards of the community. Each pot serves two homes and holds approximately 15 gallons of sewage before it begins to back up in the service line coming from the home. Each pot is equipped with an actuator valve and a controller that opens based on the pressure of the vacuum system and the need of the customer's individual pot. The pots only function under a vacuum of 16 to 18 inches and require the main vacuum station to be operational. During the vacuum station repair, two vacuum trucks provided by area contractors and one of our trucks went through the community pumping each of these pits. The contractor trucks have periodically been reassigned to other emergencies, so the number of trucks has varied from one to three depending on availability. At this time, we have restored service to approximately 100 of the 444 homes. Initial crews worked over 16 hours per day over the past eight days, so we started rotating new personnel in order to get technicians rest. We are hopeful that service can be restored to the residents by tomorrow, but may extend to a longer period depending on the amount of vacuum leaks that we find throughout the system. Restoring service is done in sections. We open one section at a time, and each section includes approximately 40 homes. Restoration efforts are slowed as the valves in the pots tend to stick open after they get wet and are activated. Thus, there is a lot of advancing and then retreating as we work the system before we can move forward to the next section. We found both vacuum pumps to be old and in poor mechanical condition. The manufacturer's technical representative was brought in to assess the reason for the failure and concluded that the condition of the pumps led to the pump failure. Technicians found that the oil in the pumps had turned to sludge. Oil filters had not been changed, air filters had not been cleaned, and gauges on the pumps were not operational. But in their opinion, what ultimately led to the failure was water inside the vacuum pump housing. Efforts to repair the pumps were partially successful. We were able to use the parts on one pump to repair the other. We were not able to locate a replacement pump in the area, but with the help of the manufacturer, located a rebuilt pump in Indiana. Delivery time was quoted at seven to 10 days, so we mobilized a technician to Indiana to pick up the pump and deliver it to the site. The vacuum system was restored to operation on Friday evening. Since that time, technicians have been working to restore service to the community. We think that this situation does highlight a few issues, the need for redundancy on the main pump station, specifically a backup vacuum pump. We were lucky this time that we were able to locate one in Indiana, but we had to send a technician 16 hours away to get the pump and bring it directly back. The need to upgrade the main vacuum station, specifically the controls in the vacuum station, need to be upgraded. The need to work with the manufacturer on modifications to the pots in order to make them more reliable and to aid in restoration effort. Specifically, our recommendations to the manufacturer is that the valves and controller be watertight versus water-resistant. A clean out on the pot. This would aid in pumping out the pot even in future issues. We are also recommending that the manufacturer, that these units be equipped with the ability to manually activate the valves so that we can activate the valve manually in the event of future issues. Storage volume. While this will not aid the Eagle Creek community, commissioners may want to ensure that any future installation of these systems include adequate storage within the pot. 15 gallons for two homes does not seem adequate, in our opinion. We hope that this will not happen in the future. Events like eight inches rainfall will likely happen again and will impact the operation of Eagle Creek Sewer System, and thus, we need to plan appropriately. While restoration efforts are ongoing, we do think it is appropriate to ensure that the appropriate redundancy measures and engineering controls are in place to both minimize the potential for pump system breakdown and aid in future restoration efforts. We know you are considering modifications to the special use permit, and we would request that approval included conditions to address some of these recommendations. If any of the residents have any questions or concerns, I will be outside after this is over with, and I will be more than happy to answer any of their questions that I can possibly answer. Thank you.
Would any board members, would you entertain any questions from board members?
Absolutely.
You have any questions or comments?
I feel, myself and Commissioner, I think we might need to do anything.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's a terrible situation. I'm sorry, but with 428 hours in there?
Yes, sir. 444, I believe.
Well, I appreciate how y'all are doing. I know it's my idea, and I know y'all are in your guys probably catching a lot of free time. You're working around the clock, so we appreciate it, and I hope that it's a case of time.
Yes, sir, and we're trying. There's two separate lines in the system. You have an eight-inch line and you have a 10-inch line. The 10-inch line serves St. Andrews, Eagle Creek Drive, and parts of Greenview. It's separated by division valves, and we try to work valve to valve, so that makes it a little, the effort a little quicker in the homes that we can assess and move forward. But over the last couple of days, what we have found is, if you get two or three valves ahead, you end up having an issue closer to the plant, and you have to shut everything back down to backtrack and work back forward. Today, we kind of stopped on the eight-inch, and we started working on the 10-inch to try to get the customers, it would be Greenview and Eagle Creek Drive, some relief, and we've run into quite a few issues as far as mechanical failures on the control valves and the pots.
I'm sorry.
When did y'all actually take over management of the operation?
Management of EnviroLink took over operations roughly a month ago. We had, well, the operator that was there, he put in his notice, he left, and then his two helpers left. So, with that being said, we had operators come in from the Chapel Hill area. I have been here for the last month and a half, operating Moyauk Regional and Eagle Creek, as well as Shawboro Elementary, so we brought in operators from all over our company to try to aid in the, just removal of other employees.
You said that eight-inch rain causes issues with the system. You don't have stormwater going into the wastewater system, do you? Or how is that adversely affecting you?
There is, that is a manufacturer defect.
The pot, these pits or pots are separated into two sections. You have the top pot, which doesn't necessarily get home wastewater in it unless you pull what we call a plunger. It's a valve that has a pressure ball in it. Once the pressure builds up in the bottom pot enough, it creates, it calls for the controller to actuate the valve. There are two sections, and the way they fit together, it allows rainwater in them, and it also allows rainwater in the lid of the manholes. And that shorts out controllers or waterlogged valves, and then it's a matter of going through and replacing them or troubleshooting them.
And I don't know where this falls as to when you came to help us in Eagle Creek, but I know that Eagle Creek was having an issue a month ago?
Yes, sir.
More or less, was that before you guys were on contract or after y'all were on contract?
I was aware that was after, because I was aware of that, and we sent, we sent employees from the Raleigh area down to assist the operators in walking the system and finding the leaks.
Okay, was that similar to the issues that you're experiencing today, or is this?
Yes, but today, today is more widespread because the complete vacuum system went down. With what happened with the rainfall, you're able to isolate it valve by valve and figure out which section needs the most attention. Walking the whole system and checking each individual pot will normally take you about three days, but with the backups that the homeowners have experienced this past week, it's taking us a little longer to check each individual pit, and, like I said, once we get ahead, we're having to fall back.
And then, then the type of improvements that you're looking at, or that you're recommending for the system?
Yes, sir.
Any idea what that's going to cost the residents of Eagle Creek?
No, sir. I do not have any idea as far as that goes. That would probably be a question for Sandler Utilities.
Okay.
Like, like Ben said, EnviroLink doesn't own it. We're just a contract operation. We come in to operate the system, and normally, we work with what we're given, and we do, normally, we do a pretty good job of it. This time, we just kind of got called out on a limb.
I'm sorry, go ahead. So, this system, how many vacuum-type systems have you all run or managed before? And how common is this type of a system?
The system is not very common. I know that there's a couple in Virginia. I believe there's one, see, they're at the Air Force or the Naval Base in Virginia. The only other one that I am aware of in North Carolina is in, I always get it wrong. It's near Southport. It's one of the--
It's Oak Island.
Yes, thank you, Ben. It's Oak Island. They're the only other system that I'm aware of. Now, when I found out that we were coming, that we would be coming to do the operations of it, we have had a couple of guys go to actual air vac and take a class, and then we, I actually had an air vac tech from Virginia come in for a couple of days this past week and do a course with some of the guys that weren't able to attend the Indiana class.
Is there any way, I mean, I understand prepositioning, spare vacuum pumps, and having that ready to go, but is there any way that you would have known or could have known about the impending failure? I mean, I get it, we had that storm, there were some issues, and y'all were working through that. I got sent stuff from Facebook on that, but, I mean, my point is, could you have known how bad it was, or should that have been better due diligence before coming on-site?
I don't think there's any way of knowing that the pumps, the pump was in as bad a shape as it was without completely tearing it apart and having an expert go through it. I'm not a mechanical expert by no means, but I don't think there was any way of knowing that that pump would go down the way it did. The second pump, while it's the same model and make, it doesn't carry the same vacuum by itself, for whatever reason. And then, we had, we had one of the sewage pumps fail, and that's the one that we kind of robbed the parts off of another to make it, make one work. It will keep up, but once you get the whole system on, this pump will struggle to keep up as well, so we're having one rebuilding, putting this one in as well.
And then, I'm going to ask you what I would consider kind of an obvious question. Is there anything that you could have done to prevent the system from failing when it failed?
No.
Because without tearing the pumps apart to determine that they were full of water, there's no way you would have known they were full of water, et cetera, et cetera.
No, sir. I do not believe that there was anything that I could have done to make--
Right, I tend to agree with that. I know, Ben, that we are under no authority to ask for, you know, what gets done to the system, per se, but I would sure be interested to know, based on the recommendations, you know, what modifications, improvements to the system get done just for our situational awareness going forward. You know, it would not surprise me, and Tracy deals with them more than I do, probably, but it would not surprise me to see DEQ ask for some permit modifications to kind of keep some stuff like this from happening. When we get together after the events, after the emergency is solved, DEQ will be at the table as well, and I think that it'll be formalized as to what changes need to be made, so that whoever owns the utility is held accountable for those changes.
Well, I have a meeting with David May, Randy Sykes, and Robert Tanker from DEQ tomorrow. I've had numerous conversations with David May and Sarah Toppin throughout this whole ordeal, with the state, the county, and whoever. I'm very transparent. I'm very honest about what I say. I have nothing to hide, so with, and Ben knows this, with Robert Tanker and David May and Randy Sykes, I have a pretty good relationship, and they will be on-site tomorrow, so they'll hear my recommendations as well.
And without understanding the magnitude of the issues, right, I mean, other than the obvious issues, I've had reports of raw sewage in front yards, running down driveways, and are we putting out any kind of, I understand Facebook's been alive, but has the county put out any, you know, you don't want your kids playing in the puddles-type public service announcements? We haven't. First of all, I think that that's information that would probably be more appropriate to come from the Health Department, since they have experts on that kind of thing. And I would also say that because, because it's a private utility, I think that it would be appropriate for the HOA and for the utility to actually put some of that information out, rather than the county widespread putting it out. Can we quote the HOA and help them disseminate that information? I just think, we need to get it out. I mean, I spoke with a lady today who said the neighbors are out there playing in the puddles, and that--
Well, I think we have the HOA president signed up to speak upon the comments, so he may touch on that at that point.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
I have a couple questions.
Yes, sir.
How many, I mean, just, I mean, I'm curious, I know you got, you were there, you were a little bit, I like lived there, so, I mean, yeah, I've seen a bunch of different guys. We worked with the other neighbor the other day, I was actually in the other day, working for my company, too. How many guys y'all have working? Well, sub-half dozen?
We have been rotating seven to eight guys in on a consistent basis. I believe yesterday was the first time that we actually only had five guys working, and we have, I have two more coming tomorrow, so we're trying to bring in as many as we possibly can to help us get through as quickly as possible.
When y'all took over, were you advanced any of the service and maintenance records on these pumps and whatnot, or were y'all just flying blind?
No, sir. The only thing I had to go off of was a piece of tape that was on an oil filter that said 6320, or 61920.
Any other questions, more? I will say, Tracy, thank you for taking time to come up here and provide a detailed explanation of what's going on, and your due diligence. I think this is going a long ways to helping the residents of Eagle Creek understand what you're dealing with and how you're addressing it as fast as you can. And again, just thank you, and I'm sure that they just can't wait to you. I mean, if you could get it done tomorrow, I'm sure they'd be happy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you again, and I think he said he'll be outside if anybody wanted to talk to him for a few minutes.
Yes, sir.
I'd ask him if he could hold off till after public comments, just because I know we probably have some folks that want to speak.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. All right, next, next item is public comment. I do want to make one statement first before we go into public comment. I've heard some discussions that during public comment, some discussion might be made about a future item, quasi, as you saw, it might be coming for the board. So, that being said, I just would ask the county attorney if he could just make a statement regarding that really quick before we go into public comment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Staff understands that there may be persons who have an interest in an application of EnviroLink that's pending for the board for a use permit for a wastewater treatment plant. Just to remind the board and to caution those members of the public that may be wanting to speak about the issues that the gentleman just spoke about, to be careful not to get into any discussion or presentation of matters that might relate to that use permit application, and that the appropriate time for them to bring that presentation to you and for you to consider those type of comments will be at the use permit hearing, which I understand is at your next meeting.
Thank you, county attorney. That being said, we're going to move into public comment, and I would ask that you state your name and address, and remember, you have a three-minute limit. You will be given a yellow light warning when you have 30 seconds left, and then the red light will tell you to please wrap it up, so we can move along with this. And the first person to speak we have signed up is Mike Hall.
Good evening. Mike Hall, 174 Old Jerry Road in Moyauk. Some of the things earlier spoke about, stakeholder meeting when it came to the ponds. When we first all got to speak, we spoke only on the ponds. We didn't talk about any really thing else involved in that. And the second part of that meeting was where we talked about bringing dirt in, and that was pretty much consensus by almost everybody. When you bring in hundreds and hundreds of truckloads of dirt, you change your topography big time. You know, if you have a flat surface, and it rains and everything else, the water kind of does its usual thing, anywhere in Moyauk, anywhere in Curritown, but when you bring in and you put this big bowl up higher, water changes how it falls out. I don't care if you put a pond or anything else, it changes the way it happens, and that's why other neighborhoods flood. If you look at a lot of the older neighborhoods, they're all built at ground level. They weren't raised up, they weren't done anything else. The newer ones are raised up. Eric Redley said it, three and four feet, it changes how things drain. I don't care how many ditches or holding ponds you have, it changes how fast it runs away from that neighborhood. It runs to the other neighborhoods that were never built up. Eric's perfectly right. Manly West, poor soil, same problem again, it's going to be drowning. And I'm bouncing a little bit, because I only have three minutes. Owen Etheridge made the comment about Guinea Road. That stormwater pond did not overflow, it breached. Big difference. It used to be that whole area right there flowed even with the road. Well, now, if you look at it, it's two to three to four feet higher all the way up. That pond, everything, all the way back, so the water doesn't flow. Guinea Road used to be on a one-inch rain, a half-inch rain, it flooded. It doesn't anymore, but it has done it twice since September. One, when it breached, and that was on a two-and-a-half or three-inch rain, which is less than our standard six-inch rain now, and the other one, when we had the big rain. But again, these neighborhoods are being built up around us, so if you want an even playing field, make it when you write these new rules where you cannot bring in filled dirt, when you cannot add all this extra topsoil and change topography to the point where, when you look out, and it used to be this, and now you see this, it's a hell of a difference, guys, ladies, it really is. It's a hell of a difference. A lot of this dirt was not because they dug out the pond. A lot of the ponds are at ground-level original, it's the sides they put on there. And yes, you can sit there and who do you call when this pond breaches? I made five phone calls to the county. I made two calls to the person that said they were selling the neighborhood, and it took three days for somebody to come out and look at it and say, yep, and it was still running out. The breach was there. You know how they fixed it? They just threw some dirt on it. They didn't go back and clean out the ditch, all the dirt and everything else that ran into the ditch, they just threw more dirt on top. So, we didn't fix anything properly. So, when you write these things, don't add any dirt from the outside. Don't change the topography more than six inches, because that's all houses are supposed to get, is six inches more. And if you need to walk around, or drive around, I'll drive around with you and show you older neighborhoods and newer ones. I'd be glad to. I think we all know it, that's an important rule. Do not add all this extra dirt from outside or inside to where it now affects your neighbors. And if it does, be willing to accept the responsibility, and that's not what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Next on the list is Karen Coolman.
Ms. Coolman had previously provided some slideshow with some pictures that she wanted to present as public comment. The clicker's up there, but it's set on a timer to scroll through, I think.
Yeah. Jamie Coolman, Karen Coolman, 172 Old Jerry Road.
Thank you.
Yeah, but it'll click through automatically, so--
Oh, okay. Oh, so we're already there?
Yeah. There you go.
Okay, so, this, we're starting at the back of our property, the barn. This is our barn. This was August the 6th. This is, the last time we spoke, Jamie and I spoke, I spoke only about August the 6th, nothing after it or before. We had a little bit of rain before. This is August the 6th, our life, from early that morning at dark, he couldn't even get it to his bork van, it was probably up to his calves, because the inside of the barn, everything was-- This is inside of the barn, everything was ruined. We had five inches of standing water. There's an actual video that will go to this, too, where you can hear him walking around. Stop right there. Look at that new building, see that grass back there? Do you see that green grass? Okay, wait, can we go?
I'll go back, I'm gonna try to...
All right, and you look to your left, that is...
That's showing you the elevation of the new property...
Can we go?
Which is draining on us.
It's breached, it is overflowed, the pond, their ditch, our ditch, it's...
I'm gonna keep going back until you tell me.
I know. It's just, it's flowing over like a waterfall. That's our property line back there. This is our life after a horrific storm, and I know it was a big one on the 6th of August, but never in our lives has this ever happened. That's our horse's yard. This is where I get so upset, because this hasn't, if you haven't lived this, and we have lived it numerous times since this development has started, numerous, this is not the way we want to live. This, we're going to stick our faces here every public speaking, and I will bring pictures every, and I will plaster it everywhere. We need some kind of resolution. We need help. If we could come together, the developer, the county, and Old Jerry Road, can we please come together and resolve this matter?
There's got to be another route that this water can take.
That's our, our horses are standing in their stalls, and it's not, that is horrible enough, because we know white line, we know if a horse doesn't have a hoof, and we get, you get infected, you can't control it, they have to be put down. If you come up to these pictures here shortly, you'll see it to our back door. Everything's floating, those little tubs, they're not on the ground, they're all floating. And then you can see the pitcher, there you go, see the new building house and that green grass? That's dry back there. This is, this lasted for days. I didn't post, I didn't get my August the 7th pictures. Look at my husband. You couldn't even get through it. August the 7th, the water was still there. It wasn't 20 inches deep, it was a foot deep.
That's showing where it's coming.
That's our garage.
Almost in the garage.
There's our front yard, and there's a picture coming to the back door of our house coming up. So this water stayed with us, as you know, for weeks, but the worst part, there's our back door, where the garden hose is. You know how far that is from our barn? That's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of feet, and it was just, it just came rushing up. Again, August the 6th, excuse me, September the 6th, 2019, the hurricane, I had pictures of that. Now, the water was 15 feet from our backyard, and it was almost cresting into our barn. In many storms after that, we had heavy flooding, but it did eventually go. This one there, this one from August the 6th, 2020, we don't know what to do. We don't know where to go, what to do. We've worked on our ditches, and I know, we've talked with Dylan and Eric, and they're thinking, they're trying. We don't know where this water, and the water has to be diverted elsewhere. If we have another, and this is, of course, this was the big storm, August the 6th, it can even be a smaller storm, and we're still going to flood. Our, the pastures will flood, in front of the barn will flood behind it. It may not flood into the barn, but we go underwater, and it's the water coming from the other side, from behind us. That's our garage. How would you like that? How would you like to come home to this every day for at least a week? You can't even find a place to park to even get out. We live on 10 and a half, a little over 10 acres. So we're here...
Looking for a resolution.
Yep, we're...
Well, thank you for showing those to us, and I'm sure...
There's actually a video Debbie had told me.
There's a video on here, I'll leave it up to...
It's a very short video. We had six minutes, we only used three.
Okay, then, let's, go ahead, if it's a short video, go ahead and roll the video.
Yeah, it's like 30, maybe 25 seconds.
Okay, and then we'll close it up after that video, then.
Not unless you have any volume.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, you gotta get back to, actually, it's not showing. Hold on.
The video is seven.
I opened it, but it's not, it's default on the bed.
Okay, well, then what I might suggest is, maybe at the next meeting, at San Antonio, maybe the next meeting, we can honor real quick.
Right, and I'll do the 7th, the day after, and then I'll do the 8th, so that you can see that the water stays with us.
Okay, thank you. The next, I had Jamie Coolman, but I guess you guys came together, so. The last person I have right now on the list is Fred Whitman. Can please state your name and address for the record?
Fred Whitman, 181 St. Andrews Road, Moyoc. Vice Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for listening to me. I wanted to start out by thanking first Chairman Etheridge, Chairman McCord, and Chairman Beaumont for all the calls you guys have made on our behalf. It's really appreciated. I also want to say that it's a difficult position to be in, in a leadership position where you have no control over what's going on, whether it's me in our neighborhood, or whether it's you as chairman, or as Commissioners. I know you guys have made a lot of calls, I've made a lot of calls, I've made calls to Lieutenant Governor, all the way down to the dog catcher, I think, trying to figure out what's going on in our community. I wanted to say first that I agree with probably 99% of what Tracy said up here, we agree with all of his changes, the updates, modifications that he wants to make to the plant. We had a list of all of those, and I think he hit every one of them, and we did not coordinate, he hit all of those. I did want to say about the pumps, though. When we had the big storm, dropped all the water on us about a month ago or so, both of those pumps were underwater. Both of those electric pumps were underwater. There's, inside the plant, there's a, called a pit, it's a concrete pit, and it was probably about four feet of water in the pit, and the pumps were underwater, and you could actually, they were actually still running. So at some point, and this isn't anything on Tracy or his folks that are working on it, they've been working diligently, a lot of hard-working guys, somebody at some point should have said, these pumps are underwater, they need an overhaul, they need to be looked at, something. So it could have been prevented. Someone should have looked into those pumps when they were underwater. And again, nothing on Tracy or his guys. But my real reason for being up here is, I wanted to share just a few things that the community has had to endure over the last eight days. I'm sure you're aware of, I'm sure you've had a lot of calls over the last eight days. We have one family who can't afford to get a hotel, and because the sewage didn't actually back up into their homes, their insurance wouldn't pay for the hotel. Their child has an autoimmune disease, and they can't take a bath, they can't shower the child or anything like that. So we actually paid for a hotel for two nights for them. And when I say we, my wife and I. We have elderly folks in the neighborhood who have sewage in their house, we've had to go around and clean up the sewage in their homes. There are approximately 43 homes right now that have sewage in their homes, that are unlivable conditions. We have at least 130 homes that have sewage spewing out what they call the candy cane on the outside of their home, and it's flowing into the street. Hundreds and hundreds of gallons of raw sewage are spilling into the streets, into the ditches, which are going into Guinea Canal and the other canals in our neighborhood. This is raw sewage that's coming out of the homes, going into our waterways. This is unacceptable. I understand that everybody's working on it, everybody's attention is on this, but we just need to do some things. Commissioner Beaumont, to your point, we do, we did send out an update, we can get ahold of approximately 85% of the people via Facebook, text message, email. We don't have everybody in the neighborhood, and many of them don't want to be notified, so there's not much we can do about it, so we notify as many as we can.
Is there anything else the county can do to help you get the word out to those folks?
I don't know if you want, if you can mail something, that's the only other way I can think of, because I doubt that they're going to have their email addresses either.
Probably not quick enough, no.
By the time, by the time mail gets there, I hope it's fixed.
Maybe we can do like a public, I don't know if you can do the paging, I don't know.
We could try to send something out through reverse 911, so the folks that are signed up for that would receive that. If the HOA or EnviroLink, somebody would get us, you know, kind of what they'd like to be sent out, we'd be more than happy to take a look at that.
Charlie, I can work with Tracy, we can come up and sign.
Just to reach out to Randall, our PO, so, and after you guys kind of figure out what you want to do.
All right, do you guys have any questions about what's happened, or? Okay.
I do want to say, I know, I mean, like you said, just like I said, I grew through there, my company, we're done with that, I've seen out there, I've seen those guys all working on it, I appreciate what y'all are trying to do, I mean, it's a terrible situation, and, you know, thank you, I mean, like, poor Tracy just inherited it 30 some days ago.
One of Tracy's guys had to climb down into the main pit over at the clubhouse. He had actually physically climbed down in the pit to affect repairs on that pit. I mean, should have been de-gassed first, but I...
A TV show that has that, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Mr. South, did you have a comment?
Thank you, very much.
Hold on.
I have a question. When you said that the pumps were underwater and somebody should have been checking on it, whose responsibility should that have been?
I don't want to throw Enviro, I don't want to throw Tracy under the bus, but EnviroLink at the time was in control of the plant, but Tracy and his guys had nothing to do with it. So someone higher up in EnviroLink should have gotten a report. I don't even know that they got the report from those on the ground that were there. The people that left the plant, that quit, those were the ones that were responsible for the plant at the time. I don't know if it was ever reported up the chain that those pumps were underwater.
The only question I would have is that there are pumps designed to work underwater, clearly. No, there are.
Oh, no, no, I'm saying not these.
And hence Tracy's point that these were water-resistant, not...
I think you were talking about the valves, though, that are water-resistant, right?
The controllers are...
Right, yeah.
Pumps?
Yeah.
Got it.
So they have a controller in the pit that is supposed to be water-resistant and wants to fill up with water.
You have to see the pump, too.
Yeah.
No, all kidding, I mean, it is a terrible situation, and we're doing everything we can do on this side of the train, and we just, we want a speedy solution.
Yeah, and again, to Tracy's point, I don't know that that's today, tomorrow, or Wednesday, I mean, it's just, it's difficult to determine.
And please get with the county, and so we can at least try to help get the word out as quickly as we can.
We'll talk, I'll talk to Ben right after this.
Thank you. That is all I had signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else who would wish to speak on this, on the subject? Yes, sir, please, oh, yep. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, man.
If you could please state your name and your address.
Joshua Langley, 209 Eagle Creek, Moyoc. So I understand that the county cannot do anything because it's private matter. My question is, when does, what amount of sewage going into our environment, before you guys step in, where are we supposed to go to the bathroom? I have four kids and a pregnant wife, and it is hard to tell them they can't take showers. I have one kid with autism who has to help clean on a daily basis, because he doesn't know how to clean himself, and we can't do that. I understand they've been working around the clock, but there's no porta-potties out for us to use the bathroom. They're saying, reserve water, don't shower, don't flush. Where are we supposed to do this at? And that's my question to you. Yes, I understand you guys cannot address this primarily due to a private company, but when does the county, at public safety and health, can you not get porta-potties?
We have no, we have no jurisdiction.
You don't have jurisdiction to get porta-potties?
I don't believe that we can expend tax dollars from the general fund, we can't provide a benefit. I get it, trust me, I do. But there's a very fine line with what we can spend our tax dollars on, the adveroral tax dollars on, and we can't provide a service to one neighborhood without every other neighborhood. And that is not the answer anybody wants to hear, I get it. But I know we've been in contact with DEQ, I've talked to Albemarle Health, they're all over it as well, and it's moving, again, you heard they'll be here tomorrow, which doesn't address the environmental, the focus is get it fixed, and then the accountability is probably the next shoe that's going to fall.
And so, I know that other places, when there are state emergencies, we apply a state of emergency, and you may not think that 423, I don't know the exact number, 444 homes times probably average of three people per home, that's a lot of people that are just sucking it up, excuse my language, but it's not a good ordeal. And there's one porta-potty on the golf course, I know we can go to the clubhouse, but you have to drive to a store, it's just, need some help, place of state of emergency.
So, forget me, Ike, can you help address what we can and can't do, what we're allowed to legally?
Well, I mean, I think your general assessment is correct, in that the county cannot spend public monies for a private purpose, and this might well constitute that, given that there are private parties involved and other remedies from that private party, the utility provider, for example, who perhaps could provide for appropriate means for people to deal with their waste needs.
What steps are we holding them accountable? As a county, as a...
We have no jurisdiction over that.
As a business, and you're counting?
No.
No, we don't. DEQ does.
Utilities are regulated by the state, and Utilities Commission as well regulates utilities.
They don't have to listen to a word we tell them.
The Department of Health has nothing that they can do about the sewage going into the streets?
Department of Health can address it with DEQ, and they put some pressure on them.
And they will.
And they will, but as a county...
Not a week ago.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
And I know that's not what you want to hear, and apologies, just, like Commissioner Beaumont said, it's a tough situation, I understand for the residents, but we're limited on what we can really do. Now, the owners of that facility, you would think they would step up and help out, but again, we can't pressure them to do anything either. And that's unfortunate.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak? Okay, I'm hearing no other one. I'm going to close public comment. And the next item we're going to go into is Commissioners' Report, and I'm going to start on my left, and, well, I'll give a few minutes for it to clear out here real quick. Okay, we're going to resume with Commissioners' Report, I'm going to start on my left with Commissioner Jarvis.
Okay. I just wanted to remind everybody that the deadline to register to vote is Friday, October 9th, and whether you do early voting, or absentee voting, or vote at a polling place on November 3rd, I hope that you will make your voice heard, so we can maintain a great republic. And if you aren't sure who to vote for, there's a lot of information out there, you just have to be a little diligent and a little determined to find it. A couple of good sources, of course, is Vote 411, and most of the candidates do have a Facebook page or a website, so I would encourage you to be informed, make good choices, so this great country can move forward. And I would like to wish everybody a happy fall with the lovely weather that we've had. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Jarvis. Commissioner Owen Etheridge?
I will follow up on what Commissioner Jarvis said and talk about political signs. I spent all day Saturday putting out some political signs, which is my right to do so. It's very discouraging when I get a phone call or a text message saying that every sign I put out Saturday is gone today. Regardless of what party you represent, these signs cost money, and people contribute money to their candidate of their choice. And is it being fair to take down one person's sign and not another? So keep that in mind, because this is information that people rely on to see who they need to consider voting for. And just keep in mind that it's just a form of vandalism, and if you are called, it's a misdemeanor, is it not?
It's a class-three misdemeanor to steal somebody's political sign, which you could get a fine of a few hundred dollars, maybe 24 hours community service, depending on your record, and, you know, you could possibly get jail time, I mean, if your record was horrendously terrible, probably.
So with that, that's all I'll say about that, and to the people of Eagle Creek, we are advocating for you, we're doing everything that we can do within the legal limits of what we can do, and we will continue to do so until it's resolved, hopefully sooner than later. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Etheridge. Then Commissioner Kevin McCord.
Touching on the political thing, like you said, I mean, we get phone calls at the Sheriff's Department, Sergeant Cap sitting in the back can attest, you know, and it's both sides, it's, there's signs being stolen from the Democratic candidates, there's signs being stolen from the Republican candidate. If you don't like the guy, girl, whoever it is, you know, signs cost money. I mean, there's seven of us sitting up here. We've all bought signs and signs cost money. Yeah, or six of us sitting here, five of us here. But Bob bought signs when he ran. Signs cost money. Don't take somebody's sign. If I catch somebody and I'm riding in the cop car, I'm going to arrest you for stealing somebody's sign. You can get a citation for stealing somebody's sign because it's a class three misdemeanor, but signs cost money. If you don't like either one of the candidates on either side, they're there. Some of them might get damaged by the state mowing. Some of them might get, I think almost all of mine got ran over all the time. But, you know, some of those, you know, like I said, some of that, and, and if you put one in somebody's yard, some of, there's probably a small percentage where people take them where they don't get permission and they put it in front of an HOA, or they put it in front of a school when it can't be there at a time. So some of those might not be stolen. Do your research before you put a sign out. Get permission before you put a sign out, whoever the candidate is. I was firm on that, you know. The, all right, that was enough on that. The, the sewer, the gentleman from the buyer link, super nice guy. I ate lunch with the county manager. Who knows what day of the week it was? I think it was Wednesday. My days run together everyone with why I work, the ends of why we work. So, but he's a nice guy. They're working as hard as they can. He knows his stuff. He lives almost four and a half hours from here and he's here every day. So they are trying. We're trying. I know they were pumping out those pits. I talked to a couple of those guys that I know that drive the septic trucks. And I mean, I want to say they've taken out 14? 13 or 14, and they hold about 25 to, to 28 is what I was told of those pits per truck. So I mean, Envirolink's having to foot that bill. They inherited a mess. I used to own a home in Eagle Creek in the early 2000s, so I can attest for that. The sewage backed up. The sewage had issues. It's, it's not something new. So I think the Envirolink people, like I said, they, they're well known throughout the state. He's, you know, knows his stuff from what we, you know, went and saw. So they're trying. That, and like you said, I'm just trying to think. There was one more thing I wanted to say and touch on. Prayer, like you said, keep, you know, the president, you know, and whether you like him or not, he's the president. Keep him in your prayers. He's got COVID. You know, any other elected official, anybody, public safety, all that stuff, you know. Everybody is just so hateful to each other. The Sheriff's Department, the month of September, the amount of DVPOs that we've served, and I've been doing it for almost 20 years, it is crazy. Be nice to somebody. It doesn't take much to, you know, if you don't, what's that old saying? If you can't say something nice, don't say nothing at all. Getting wiser as I'm getting older, I guess. But slowly but surely, but that's mainly it. Like I said, just a lot going on in the county. Prayers. I hope the Eagle Creek stuff gets fixed. I know those guys are working and the septic guys are pumping those pits. There's 212 of them. And they were doing about 25, uh, 25 to 28. So they could knock out 50 in a day, but I think they've redone a bunch of them even more, unfortunately, because they had no choice. But it was neat to see how our county sewer system worked and everything. That was, it was neat. It was educational. You learn something new every day. That's it for me. Yeah, don't call in.
Thank you, Commissioner McCord. I'll go ahead and jump in next here. Just wanted to give the, the latest COVID update. As of today, there were 194 cases in Currituck County. There's 13 active, 178 have recovered, and three deaths. That was today's update from the Health Department of the reported cases. And I'll just reiterate that as far as Eagle Creek, I do sympathize with the residents there and the county. We are going to do everything we can. And I know it's just, it's been a hard times, but we're, we're trying to help move along the best way we can. That's all I have. Commissioner Mary Etheridge?
I'll jump on elections also. We've got one stop voting that's going to start on Thursday, on the 15th, and run through Saturday, October the 31st. During the weekdays, they'll be open from 8:00 AM to 7:30 PM. On Saturday, October the 17th and 24th, they're open from 8:00 to 6:00 PM. And on Saturday, October the 31st, they're open from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Please be aware that you will not be voting in the election board office. You will be voting in the Judicial Center in Courtroom C. I'm sure it'll be marked very well for everybody so they'll know where to go. So make sure you're aware of it. You will not vote in the election board office. Also, Operation Santa is underway, as I mentioned last meeting. The Department of Social Service needs help with local children, foster children. They also do food baskets for senior citizens. You can call the director, Samantha Hurd, at 252-232-6040. Or you can email any questions you might have at operation.santa@currituckcountync.gov. And my final thing is October is Breast Awareness Month. I know with the COVID, a lot of people have put off going to the doctors, going to different places. Please make sure you get your mammograms because that's where it's detected early. I'm a breast cancer survivor and mine was detected by a mammogram. So make sure you go and get those tests done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Etheridge. Commissioner Beaumont?
So I'm going to kind of touch on a couple of the other issues and to echo the rest of the Commissioner's sentiments. Yeah, we're watching Eagle Creek and this board's going to make sure that our county can do everything that we possibly can do legally. And I, I know I've talked to Ben almost every day to get an update, and I'm sure that will continue for the rest of the board as well. So I saw an interesting comment on Facebook about a week ago that said, what is all the traffic doing on the highway on Saturday? And the answer is, we're not done with our guest season yet. Anybody that's been out on a Saturday and Sunday, we're, we may not be full. It may not be what it's been during peak. But I'll tell you that there are still a ton of visitors that are coming to our county or driving through our county. With that said, everybody drive politely. You know, crazy driving doesn't do anybody any good, and there's nothing like catching the guy that went flashing past you at the stoplight up ahead to find out that, you know, you're risking not only your lives, but other people who are trying to have a safe vacation as well as our residents. So that's, that's number one. Number two, tragically, Currituck had our first fatality in three years through drowning. And, and it almost goes in the category of it didn't need to happen. And, and while tragically any drowning is bad, these were people swimming under a red flag. And we, the Ocean Rescue flies red flags when the beach is too dangerous to go into the water. And while I'd like to say, you know, it's just a tourist thing, we have county residents that go out in the ocean in conditions that they have no business being out in the ocean. And while it's, it, it's tragic to the family, but it's also tragic to the young lifeguard that, that did her best to try and save, save that individual. Ocean Rescue worked for 40 minutes as well as EMS to try to save the dad's life. At the end of the day, you know, they did the best they could and, and they, they too suffer PTSD, if you will. No one wants to lose somebody on their watch. So please be judicious when you go in the water, and if it's red flagged, please stay out. I know there's a call to the Sheriff's Department to start enforcing it. Is it a $500 fine? Swimming under a red flag? It's significant.
I thought it was $250. Sergeant Capps? I think it's $250. I think it's $250. I mean, which $250 is a lot of money.
That's per family member. So my family's certainly not going in the ocean. Anyway, and so with that, again, you know, tourist season's going to go on through this entire month. Many rental companies are, are jammed through the month of November, and many are through the month of December. So we're going to have guests with us for the rest of this calendar year. We're not done yet, and thank God that we have folks that, that love to vacation where we live. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Beaumont.
Chairman, can I add one thing?
Yes, sir.
What Commissioner Kitty Etheridge stated about the voting, and I don't know this for a fact, but I believe Courtroom C, if you go in through the side of the Judicial Center, and like I said, by the probation is where Courtroom C is located, and I'm pretty sure that's probably the entrance they'll use. Yeah.
Straight back.
Straight ahead. Yeah, you don't turn.
If I may.
I was told they were going to use the side door entrance.
If I may, I attended the Board of Elections meeting last Tuesday, and we went over and looked at what Sydney plans are for it. And it's to try to bring people into the side door. So if you park in the side parking lot, you come in that side door. They go in, there'll be signage saying where they can go in to vote. They will enter into the regular way of going into Courtroom C. They'll have multiple booths set up around the room. And they'll have the voting machine in one spot. You put your vote, ballot into the voting machine and then go out that back door. So you won't be coming out as people are coming in. So it's got a good flow to it, the way they're going to lay it out.
And if I may, if I may, there would also be single-use pens, so you would not be sharing pens with anyone.
Yeah.
People should wear a mask.
That's right. In fact, there's a requirement that you wear a mask in the, in judicial buildings as issued by the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court.
What about the?
Let me add one more thing. I watched them go through the process of opening the absentee ballots they had received to date last Tuesday. I think it was 349. And they did have some problems with a couple of them. And they're going to go back to the individuals and give them an opportunity to correct what was wrong on them. But that will only go up to a certain period of time before the election because of the timeframe they've got, according to the judge the other day who blocked the lengthened time period the Board of Elections gave them. So it's imperative that they make their ballots, absentee ballot requests, right. And I got to commend our Board of Elections. They were very diligent in what they did in going through those ballots. And all five members agreed on the ballots they kicked back. So I think we've got a good Board of Elections and they're going to do what's right.
Are you talking about ballots or applications?
No, ballots. They already fed them into the tabulator. They didn't, they did not take a number, but they're in the machine.
Mr. Vice Chairman, with that, let me throw another one out there. If you requested an absentee ballot and you have not received it yet, you need to contact the Board of Elections because I know of at least one case where the accurate address was provided and it was returned to that, it was returned to the Board of Elections as an undeliverable address. So if you requested an absentee ballot and you haven't gotten it yet, you need to follow up with the Board of Elections.
And I think if you go on the state website, you can follow the whole process.
You can. One more thing, too, and I did hear this from Sydney and then that the, you know, as far as if somebody is handicapped or something like that, they, you know, like as always, there'll be measures to assist them with their voting. Even though, because it's so much different.
Is there any other election updates we'd like to discuss? You good?
Yeah, it's on November 3rd. It's the official voting date. I'm just kidding.
No, thank you. It's good information for our citizens out there. I appreciate all the input on, on the elections coming up. All right, next item is our county manager's report.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Payman. First off, I want to discuss the solid waste decals. Those went out in the tax bills. Most folks got them. We've had some questions from folks who rent property or needed an extra decal. If you go to our website, to the Public Works section of the Currituck County website, and you click on solid waste decals, you'll see where there's, there's ways that you can actually obtain those. There's an online form. If you actually click on that and fill it out, your information comes in, as long as we can verify it through records or through a document that you add, if you're a renter, like a lease or utility bill, we'll mail you the decals out to you. So it's, it's, it's as seamless as we can possibly make it. Keep in mind, those are going to be needed to go to all, all the convenience sites on January 1st, 2021. I had a question that, that came up from Commissioner Owen Etheridge, and so I wanted to take just a second and talk a little bit about Currituck County and our use of CARES funding. I'm going to see if this is going to pull up on the screen. I hope it does. So what you see here is the amount of CARES funding that we have spent to date, what we've spent it on, and then what we have remaining. So CARES Act funding came down from federal government. It then flowed to the state of North Carolina. They decided how much every county got. Then they gave us certain ways that we could use it and certain regulations you had to follow when you used it. So what you see there, the first column, we used approximately $68,000 for law enforcement salaries. That's whenever we were doing the bridge closure. We had a lot of overtime that, that we had to pay for that wasn't budgeted for.
Until April was terrible.
Yeah, so then as we transitioned after the new budget year, we moved into covering EMS salaries. All public safety salaries are considered 100% substantially, substantially dedicated to COVID responses. You had contracted labor, which was a very small amount, in approximately $6,000. And then goods and expenses, which would have been masks, sanitizer, some materials to put up partitions. And then finally, some equipment expenses, once again, very minor for some of the COVID-related responses that we had. We've got $50,000 that's been requested that the board has, has talked about, 25 to Albemarle Food Bank and 25 to Interfaith Community Outreach. So that, those distributions need to be finalized, but once they're actually distributed, it'll be in our form. We've got a total expected revenue coming in of $1.2 million. So total remaining, we have 200, $256,270. I know that, that we've had some questions come in about why we didn't do, you know, more expanded testing sites and that kind of thing. The, actually, the Albemarle Regional Health Department receives funding to be able to do more robust testing. They did a clinic in Corolla, an extra one force in Corolla. There's a weekly test there. And most of the time you're, if you have symptoms and you, you call your regular physician, they're going to refer you to the place to get a test, whether it's, whether they are doing it in their office or they're going to send you to an urgent care in ER. So staff felt like, when you're, when you're dealing with federal funds, there can be a lot of really tricky nuances. And I will tell you that salaries is the one place where there's less, it's easier to track because we already have payroll. So what does that mean for the taxpayers? The fact that we've used it on some of these expenses that we have, like EMS salaries, it means that we stick a little bit more in the rainy day fund so that as we head into next year, meaning calendar year, if COVID doesn't, you know, go away, the vaccine doesn't take off, and our economy, thank God, has been gangbusters this year. But if it, if it fails to do that in the future, we've got a little bit of extra buffer there. But we're using it appropriately. We're using the way that there's actually an office that the state set up called, and it's NC Pro. I can't remember what the acronym stands for off the top of my head.
Yeah, North Carolina.
That part I can get.
The first two.
Yeah.
I was thinking the same thing.
Pandemic Recovery Office from the Finance Director. So I just wanted to kind of clear up any questions that, that folks may have about how we've used our CARES Act funding. It's had a lot more attention than other, other jurisdictions because there was a big debate over how they were going to share it with municipalities. We don't have a municipality, so we didn't have to get into all of that. So we've got a little bit left. We have to spend it out by the end of December. You know, we're going to kind of see what things there might be out there. We always have EMS salaries because, like I said, they are substantially dedicated to the, to the COVID through the end of December.
Is that, and I mean, I know most of ours from April from the Sheriff's Office, and I know that, and Sergeant Capps is in the back, can too. We had to work the, the bridge so much, and then we worked boat duty and all that stuff, the whole month of March and April until the bridge opened in May. The EMS salaries, when it's, is that their overtime for?
No, that, that's just the straight salaries. So we're allowed to do that based on what the CARES Act gives us. So what you see in law enforcement was directly related to the bridge closure. The, the rule was that, and I'm going to get really into some nuance here on financial rules, so bear with me. The rule was that you could not use it on something that was budgeted prior to March 27th. Is that the right date? And I'm looking at the Finance Director. So the reason that you see EMS salaries after July 1, we didn't adopt our budget until June, which means that no money was budgeted for EMS salaries until after that deadline, which makes it an allowable expense based on CARES funding. The sheriffs were specifically overtime because that's extra overtime we hadn't budgeted for through our usual budget process.
Goodness gracious, we had to do those.
Yeah, we didn't predict the bridge closure. So.
I just was curious on that number, just because, like you said, I mean, I understand it now.
Yep.
Are you saying it had to be budgeted?
It couldn't.
Couldn't have been.
If it was budgeted before that deadline, February or March, then you could not use CARES money to cover it. So that's why it's EMS salaries after 7/1, because that money's not budgeted until after that deadline.
Okay, I'm going to throw something out there. Since it's to prevent the spread of COVID, is there any way we could use some of the money up at Eagle Creek because of the worry about spreading COVID because of?
I'm looking at my Finance Director, and she's not giving me a warm and fuzzy look on that one. We'd have to, I'd have to do a. Yeah, we'd have to call the North Carolina Pandemic Recovery Office to see if that is an allowable expense. I, they've been really strict on how, and, and if you did that, you've got to be able to, there's a lot of hoops to jump through. a lot of hoops to jump through whenever you send money to a different entity, or even if we did it ourselves for something like that. It's, there's a lot of strings attached to federal money. That's just the way it is. But we can look into that.
You know, it might be something to look into, getting them supplies, even if we can't get porta potties out there, supplies, handy wipes and things like that, because to me, it is a dangerous situation out there.
Be more than happy to look into it and see.
To look into, see if there's any relief that we can use the.
Yeah.
Care funding for, that's just my thought.
This money came down in two segments. 700,000 roughly the first time, and a half a million, but we didn't get to the second segment until what, middle of August?
Middle of August, first of September is when it came down, something around that. So, and they didn't tell us what the second batch was gonna be. They just said initially that they had a reserve pot, total pot, and that that was gonna be, it could come, it might not come. Most local governments in North Carolina were hopeful that, we've been very blessed in Currituck County, and I want everybody that's listening tonight to hear that. There are a lot of counties in our state where people, a large number of people are out of work, businesses have shut down and will never reopen, and some counties were in such a financial crisis, they were hoping to be able to use this as for revenue shortfalls, and the federal government just never allowed that. I'm not saying that they should have, I'm just saying they didn't. So that's why they held that second pot of money back in case it got approved for that, then if they sent it out, it could be used. But, I mean, I know that, I know it's been a trying year, I know it's been scary for folks, stressful, no matter what situation you view the virus, the, but I want folks to keep in mind that, I mean, you look at some of the other rural counties in our state, and their virus count is a lot higher than ours, their death count is a lot higher than ours, their active case count's a lot higher than ours. And like I said, they've been economically devastated in ways that we haven't. So let's be thankful, let's count our blessings, but always try to remember those folks in other communities that are, it's easy whenever, you know, you're kind of in a tight-knit community not to realize what's happening out there, but, I mean, I mean, if you look just to some of the communities, and I'm sure you see the numbers with the Health Department, there's some places in bad shape, so.
We're very fortunate, like you said, in most of our, you know, from the CDC numbers and all that stuff, like I know Commissioner Payman gets, I mean, the death numbers are coming in for the higher, you know, more, you know, at-risk age.
They are. But, yeah, so we're fortunate, but like I said, I felt like it was prudent to, let's keep that kind of, let's keep the money in a place where if we need it, you know, because like I said, the tourism year next year, I hope it's as gangbusters, I hope that I'm as off next year as I was this year, but I'm cautious and conservative with taxpayer dollars, and I wanna keep a little bit for the rainy day just in case we need it.
Take that.
Yes, ma'am.
To reiterate one thing, we have had a request to the Food Pantry and Interfaith Group to provide them some assistance to help with, like, food distribution and stuff like that, and we are going to proceed down that path.
25,000 to each. They will have to prove that that, those funds are expended directly on COVID-related issues. It'll be a budget amendment that'll come before the board at the next meeting, then we'll do a grant agreement and get them the money. I believe it can be used on things that have been expended since, you know, they can look back and use the money. Those are, those two entities came and requested it from us. We have had a request for some funds from the school system, the superintendents in the audience tonight, I've talked to him, and he's actually gonna come give a very more robust budget conversation some point in the future, and he'll discuss some of that with you at a future date, but.
But that's just occurred in the last week or so.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I get the Halloween trick-or-treating? I've had like 600 phone calls probably on that. Unless the governor, can you, the county manager, touch on that?
So I'll try to, what I would say on that is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it back off on the sheriff a little bit, so if the governor, unless the governor comes out and says something, there's no executive order that disallows trick-or-treating, there's no curfew in effect. So I think right now you could if you wanted to. I think it's a personal preference if you want to distribute, and a personal preference if you want to go collect candy. If the governor comes down with something, obviously it would fall to the sheriff to kind of interpret that and enforce it, but I haven't heard anything about that. Since we're talking about the governor's executive orders, just to update the board, we went to Phase 3?
We'll call it that.
Yeah, I didn't know there was a Phase 3 and a half or 4, but I guess there is.
Point 2.5, I think.
Yeah.
Point 3.5, no.
So the two things that are still kind of heavily impacted as far as county operations are senior center and the library. I'll address the senior center first. We currently have a heavier caseload than we had when the senior center shut down in March. Because they are our most at-risk population, I'm not comfortable with your manager recommending opening the senior centers back up. There've been some discussions about starting to bring volunteers back. We're not really at that point yet. I think that with the volunteers, they know how to minimize their circle of contact, or with the employees, if you do volunteers, you don't know kind of who all they might be interacting with before they give home-delivered meals. And then on the libraries, I'm not gonna say we haven't had a complaint, we've had very few complaints. The libraries are still open for business as far as book pickup and drop-off. There's still online services being offered, they've done online storytime, they've really done a very robust virtual, and right now, I mean, like I said, we're in no better shape now than we, I mean, I know what the governor has said as far as phases, but we have the same, we have more caseload now than when we shut it down. My, be my recommendation to the board to at least hold for, you know, a couple more weeks. I don't think it's gonna hurt anything, and kind of see, they're hopeful that a vaccine comes out in November, so I think it's just prudent.
The seniors, they can still play pickleball at the high schools.
They are playing the mess out of some pickleball at the high school.
My dad asked me the question every day, when's the senior center open?
And right now, with the limiting number of people, it's just not a good idea.
No, I agree.
Now, that's all I've got, so that was more than I intended, but thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Steichlauer. Okay, the next item is new business, Item A, Resolution of Appreciation. I'll go ahead and read this resolution, then I'll ask the board for a motion. This is a resolution of appreciation. North Carolina Senator Bob Steinberg, North Carolina House Representative Bobby Hanig, and North Carolina House Representative Ed Godwin, in recognition of their efforts to cause the North Carolina Department of Transportation to resume operation of the Currituck Knott's Island Ferry, whereas Currituck County and the citizens of Knott's Island have depended on a regular free ferry service to serve as their only direct connection to the Currituck County mainland for over 50 years, and whereas the Knott's Island Ferry provides the residents of Knott's Island the ability to enjoy economic opportunities, access to quality and equal education, and a way for public safety services to be provided quickly in times of emergency, and whereas in March 2020, as a response to the COVID-19 pandemic, North Carolina ferry operations were suspended by the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and whereas although ferry travel is the main form of transportation and only connection to the Currituck mainland for citizens of Knott's Island, the ferry will still not operate on Labor Day. However, ferries serving the communities of Aurora, Bayview, Cedar Island, Cherry Branch, Currie Beach, Hatteras, Minnesota Beach, Ocracoke, and Swan Quarters in the North Carolina ferry system had long resumed operations, and whereas, understanding the detrimental impacts to the citizens of Knott's Island with the continued suspension of the Knott's Island Ferry, including risks to residential health and safety, North Carolina State Senator Bob Steinberg and North Carolina State House Representatives Bobby Hanig and Ed Godwin intervened on behalf of Currituck County's citizens to quickly reestablish operations of the Currituck Knott's Island Ferry. Now therefore be it resolved that the Currituck County Board of Commissioners acknowledges and commends the efforts of Senator Steinberg, Representative Hanig, and Representative Godwin that caused the North Carolina Department of Transportation to resume the Currituck Knott's Island Ferry operation. To be further resolved that the Board of Commissioners appreciates the strong commitment of Senator Steinberg, Representative Hanig, and Representative Godwin to serving the citizens of Currituck County adopted this 5th day of October 2020. Move for approval.
Second.
Go ahead.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes. Thank you. Okay, and the next item under new business is another resolution. I'll go ahead and read that one and ask the board for another recommendation. Well, actually, item agenda, let me see, excuse me. The Resolution of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners authorizing design-build construction delivery method for the Moyack Elementary School and the Moyack Middle School additions and renovations project, whereas pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143A-128.1A, a county may utilize the design-build delivery method for construction contracts, and whereas in order to utilize the design-build delivery method, the governmental entity is to establish in writing the criteria used for determining the circumstances under which the design-build method is appropriate for this project, and whereas the criteria proposed and its application to the Moyack Elementary School and Middle School, Moyack Middle School additions and renovation projects is the following. Criteria 1, the extent to which the county can adequately and thoroughly define the project requirements prior to the ensuing of the request for qualifications for the design builder. Through the Engineering Department and Legal Department, the county has professional personnel with the experience and qualifications needed to thoroughly define the project requirements prior to issuance of, ensuing of a request for qualifications for design builders. Criteria 2, the time constraints for the delivery project due to rapid population growth in the Moyack area and requirement to provide adequate public facilities. The need for additional student capacity at Moyack Elementary School and Moyack Middle School is urgent. The Board of Commissioners has resolved that this project should be completed in the most time-effective and efficient manner available. The design-build delivery method will allow for the project to be completed expeditiously. Criteria 3, the ability to ensure that a quality project can be delivered. Within the Engineering Department, the county has adequate professional experience professionals or experienced personnel to ensure that the design-build firm will provide a quality project within budget constraints established by the board. Criteria 4, the capability of the county to manage and oversee the project, including the availability of experienced staff or outside consultants who are experienced with the design-build method of project delivery. With the Engineering Department and Legal Department, the county has professional and experienced personnel that are knowledgeable of the designed-build project. Criteria 5, a good faith effort to comply with North Carolina General Statute 143-123.2, North Carolina Statute 143-128.4, and to recruit and select small business entities. The county complies with North Carolina General Statute 143-128.2 and North Carolina General Statute 143-128.4. The county will require contractors to comply with the hub goal set by the Board of Commissioners. Criteria 6, the criteria utilized by the county, including a comparison of costs and benefits of using the design-build delivery method for a given project in lieu of the other design or delivery methods identified. The design-build delivery method provides a one-team approach, which leads to lower cost and shorter project timeline, project time constraints, the need to have beneficial use of the facilities during construction, and because one of the facilities is a historic structure, make the design-build option more appealing than the traditional construction delivery methods. There now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners adopt these written criteria and determine that the design-build delivery method is approved for utilization of the Moyack Elementary School and the Moyack Middle School additions and renovations. Further, this resolution shall be effective on and after the 5th day of October 2020, adopted this day, the 5th day of October 2020. Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Wait, excuse me. One question. Okay, I'm sorry, I forgot about the questions. Yes, sir. If everything goes like we hope it goes, when do we anticipate the Moyack Elementary School being completed?
August of 2023. If we hit all of our, that's me, I mean, I'm conservative, but that's, that's what we think. So we would have, we would be able to give notice to proceed in June as we go through the selection process. There's built in there roughly six months to a year of design time and a year of construction time. And hopefully both projects would be on a similar, similar timeline, the middle school and the elementary school. We'll try to have them run concurrently.
Okay. Any other questions, Ward?
The.
Yes, sir.
Far as the mobile, is there mobile classroom, when we went the other day, is there mobile cla, the mobile classrooms at Moyack, but is there mobile classrooms at Moyack Middle?
Not yet.
There's two that sit in the back.
Yeah.
But they're, yeah, I think the computer guys use one of them.
Yeah, no, there's no currently occupied mobile classrooms, so we'll see if we have, if they have to get there before the project's done. There is a large 4th grade class that'll hit the middle school.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, the next item is the consent agenda. Need a motion for approval?
Second.
Any questions? A motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. The next item is, I'll go ahead and recess the general board meeting and move that we enter into the special meeting of Tourism Development Authority. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Okay, and we'll turn this over to County Manager Ben Steichlauer.
Thank you, sir. So the, similar to the budget amendments that were in the consent agenda, the first one under the Tourism Development Authority is for the COLA and the Phase 1 and the additional bonus that the board recommended at the, as we talked about redoing the budget because of the extra revenues that have come in. And then the other budget amendment is simply to put a line item in for contracted services. We don't know if there will be any on the Maritime Museum, but there could be, and so this basically builds that in, so that if we, if we have something that comes up, we've got a line to pull those funds from. Be happy to answer any questions.
Comment, I did see the Maritime Museum over the weekend, and that's a great-looking building.
Yes, sir.
I agree totally. It's gonna be a real, I mean, yes, it's a beautiful building, and it'll look like it's been there for the whole time once it's constructed, I think.
Any other questions, Ward? Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I will ask for motion to adjourn the meeting of the TDA and move into the special meeting of Motion, Sands, Water, and Sewers District Board.
So moved.
I have a second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Yeah, I'll turn it over to our county manager.
Thank you, sir. Once again, you've got a budget amendment here to add in funds for the COLA and for the bonus checks, and then also, they're just a little short on postage for, so need to make a budget amendment to add money into the postage line item. Be happy to answer any questions.
Move for approval?
Second.
Approve and a second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and I'll ask for motion to adjourn the meeting of the OSWSD Board and Rec. Okay, have a motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, with that, I move that we go into closed, recess the general meeting and go into closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A 3, to consult with the county attorney and to preserve the attorney-client privilege. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll just wait. Thank you.